Here. Here.
Here. Yes.
We have a quorum. I think the first item on the agenda is the downtown mural grant request, call upon Lee Smalt of the Public Arts Commission. Requested action is recommendation to the council to submit a grant application for a downtown mural project. Good morning, Lee.
Good morning, Council. Thank you for seeing me. My name is Lee Smalt. As Mayor mentioned, I serve on the Public Arts Commission. We are exploring options for a downtown mural. It'll be large block letters that say, "Welcome to Fergus Falls." The idea is to create a central piece for placemaking here in our community, but also contribute to some economic development by bringing more foot track effect to downtown. So we have been exploring some options with local artists. We've gotten some preliminary estimates for between $9,600 and $12,500 for the initial estimates for this project. We've gotten permission from the property owner, and we're currently seeking the council's authorization to apply for a legacy cultural and heritage grant through Lake Region Art Council that will cover the cost. So in order to do that, we need to fill out that grant this week.
Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laurel.
Which building's it gonna be on?
It'll be on the someplace safe building on the north-facing wall at the intersection of Union and Lincoln.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so you can actually see here.
I couldn't recognize the building. Where is that? Oh, no, I don't. Okay, sure.
So will it cover the marketplace?
It won't cover the marketplace. It'll actually sit a little bit lower, closer to the ground. We're still gonna have to work through some of the details of what the actual design looks like pending funding, so.
So, Your Honor. So, Lee, you're really coming just for the grant application today? Is that kind of what we're looking at? That's why we're involved? Because I was kind of looking at this, and I was like, hey, this is private property. You guys can do what you want, different things like that. Are you gonna come back to us and give us kind of a schematic of what it's actually gonna look like? And are you gonna need our vote on it? Or is it just gonna show us and kind of go forward with it?
Well, for now, we need to seek the funding. And then, once we've established funding, then we can come back to the committee for approval for the actual design. It's the idea is to focus on local culture, local heritage, and try to bring some more attention to the area. So at that point, we'll come back to the council and seek your approval.
But typically, they wouldn't let them come back. I mean, the mural on the Benson Building, I mean, the council didn't approve that.
Well, that wasn't the Public Arts Commission doing that. That was a private project. This would be, this is the Public Arts Commission applying for the grant and overseeing the process.
Just a question, too, also. You know, since there's already an advertisement on that building, too. Was there any talk about directly across the street to the west there? There's another building. I know that there's some lighted sign on there. I think there's a Thrive Inn there. But was that ever explored either across the street or not?
We had talked with a couple of different property owners. At this time, because of sort of the short deadline for applying for the grant, we already have approval with this property owner, so we decided to move forward there.
Okay. Very good.
Any other questions?
Just one comment, I believe. Clara, the Charles Beck installation required a permit as it qualified as a sign. But the mural on the Benson Building didn't qualify as a sign. Is that correct?
If I'm remembering correctly, we actually did not require the Beck one to get assigned. They had asked about applying, and since it's not advertising language, it was, we considered it an art piece. I don't believe I made them get a signed permit for that.
On local? It's a motion. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign? Thank you. All those against, same sign? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Everybody good for the consent agenda for that? Thank you. It's just a pass-through. So the next item on the agenda, thank you, Lee. The next item on the agenda is an engineering project task orders. Kyle Meyer requested action, recommendation to the council to approve engineering task orders for the five public improvement projects for the 2026 season. Over to Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So tonight, or this morning, I've got a number of engineering agreements that I'm asking approval for. And maybe what I'll do, since there's a bunch of them here, is I'll run through and explain each one out, and then we can have a discussion then. Or stop me at any point, and we can ask, answer any questions. So the first engineering agreement that I'm asking approval for is for more engineering for the Cavor project. The Cavor project is redoing Cavor from Union Avenue to Cascade, as well as Mill Street and Court, along with the alleyways, as we've talked in the past, to include on that project. This project, the way it's set up now is to complete all of the utility work within the right-of-ways, as well as sidewalks, curb and gutter, and streetwork. That project, we went through during the CIP, and the numbers are straight out of the CIP. Total project cost on that's 3.2 million. So today, the engineering agreement that we're asking for is for the entire project from beginning to end, for the engineering agreement, in the amount of $346.50. And again, from a timing standpoint, and why we're here today for these is it is October 1st, and we're really pushing to get these projects bid in a timely fashion so that we really can get the best bids out and get the best dollar for the city here. So our goal is to have a bidding timeframe around January, February for these. Okay? The next one that's on the list is Cleveland Avenue. Cleveland Avenue will be from Franklin Avenue to Fur Avenue. This is over by the elementary school. This project, again, same as Cavor, with all utilities replaced within the project constraints, as well as doing sidewalk, curb and gutter, and streetwork with those projects. Again, engineering agreement for more engineering in the amount of $268,200. Again, from beginning a project to end a project, to close a project. Then the next one is Douglas Avenue from Kelvin Street to Union Avenue. That project, again, same as the other, all utilities, all streetwork within the right-of-way would be replaced with that project. That project is in the amount for more engineering in the amount of $201,000. The next project is the D Lagoon Project. D Lagoon Road Project. That project, we do have some existing grant funding on that project already. Just over $200,000, I believe. And that project is to repair the street within D Lagoon Park, which will include patching of the really bad areas, and then doing an overlay over the street. So all new paving within D Lagoon Park. That is for more engineering in the amount of $72,500. Again, that is to complete the project from beginning to end. And then the fifth one on the list, this is for interstate engineering. This is for the Trunk Highway 210 utility project that we just awarded bids to. The contractor is getting ready to start, and this would be to interstate engineering to provide construction services on that project. Be out on project, do inspections, handle the construction work, and bring that project to a close. And that is in the amount of $95,147. So that's all of them. I know it's a lot. I'll take any questions that the council may have.
I think maybe the process would be, obviously, we approve, obviously, the, this is the engineering. And as you say, you go out there, develop the scope, you put it out for bid. And then those bids would come back to the council for approval. You know, sometime, obviously, probably early '26.
Correct.
For the work to be done in '26. And then the varied funding mechanisms at that point would be, you know, more specific. I mean, we've looked at that already in the CIP discussion. And then ultimately, we would end up then paying for these projects in '27. I'll start payments on them in '27.
Right, and we'd also come back later this fall with a five-year capital improvement plan that relates to street reconstruction bonds as well. That will all be part of this process with more as well, so.
Correct.
So we're not making a decision tonight, or this morning, on physically doing these projects? This is just the preliminary engineering to enable us to get estimates for it?
Correct. It's for us. The decision today would allow us to start the process of surveying and putting together plans and specs so that we can go out for bids on the project.
One other question. Lynn, you can help me on this. We would actually, the resolution would include initiating the project, right? Our standard resolution for that.
One is a separate one.
Yep.
Great.
Is there any questions of Kyle, Mike?
Yeah, Your Honor, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing them forward. I think this, I think, you know, we have quite a balance here that we're going on. I think the residents of this city can see that, hey, we've got five road projects or more that we're really aggressively trying to do. This is, this is probably more than anybody else has tried to take on. But at the same time, we have a great levy committee that's working as hard as they can to try to get that levy down so we don't have a raise in taxes in this community. One of the things that I ask you, and it may come down to Andrew answering or staff asking, is we're looking at almost a million dollars' worth of engineering fees here. And if that's what it is, that's what it is. Do we know if in the past that our in-house engineer would have taken care of some of these costs or all of these costs would have been about this million dollars for engineering fees for our city?
Yeah, Your Honor, hopefully, Portman and Bill can chime in, too. In the past, what we would have seen is we would have had our internal staff charging their time to the project. Plus, we would have been paying a consultant on top of that at a percentage that was likely higher than what we see here today. So we would have been spending, I mean, it's, I guess, without being able to say it's X percent. I can't tell you an exact number, but we would be spending significantly less under the former situation that we were in than what we're seeing here.
Certainly more.
Spending less?
Less.
Okay.
We would have been spending significantly more previously than what's before you today.
Yeah, and from what I've seen and what these numbers entail, this, this is significantly less than what you've seen in the past for these types of projects.
Any other questions? Scott?
Just a specific question on the Cleveland project. Currently, the sidewalk is only on one side of the street from Franklin to Beach, and then from Beach to Fur, there's no sidewalks. I'm expecting that the proposal will be to replace and repair what's there. I'd like to see it to also include at least some alternates for a sidewalk from Beach to Fur. Given the proximity of Cleveland School and no sidewalks at all in that area, it's a concern that I think we ought to at least have an alternate to consider when that time comes.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. We'll do that. And as well as, as we get into design, there will also be other things that we will see as we, as we begin design that we will bring to the council if there are some changes or additions to those projects so that we can make a decision as a council with regards to the project. There may be some instances, and Cavor is one of them. Cavor is a very wide street today. We're gonna look at maybe some options to narrow it up and see if that is something we want to do within the community.
Andrew?
Yeah, Your Honor. I also, if my memory serves correctly, and I couldn't tell you what year this happened, but the council passed a resolution to add the Cleveland project as an alternate, the sidewalk near Cleveland School as well. So probably the remainder of the stretch that you excluded, Councilmember Kwame. And I'll review what that resolution was. It was probably a year or two ago.
Yeah.
Wasn't that on, that was on the east side of Cleveland? Yeah.
I was gonna say, we did it. I think we did.
That was gonna be my question, too. The other comment that I have is, I know with Councilmember Kwame had just brought up from going from Beach all the way to Fur. As a young boy, I walked that every day, going to school. And, you know, as far as putting a sidewalk in there, it'd be very difficult looking at some of those yards that are there because you've got hills, you've got drop-offs to the, to the street. You know, it'd be nice, but I don't know how that would work with some of those homeowners because it just wouldn't be really conducive for a sidewalk in some of those areas.
Yeah, and as part of this, you know, as we get into the design, once we get the survey, we'll be able to answer some of those, as well as, you know, I foresee us having some meetings with the residents as well to, you know, hear from them if there's some things that we can do or that they see out there with regards to the projects right in front of their houses.
The other comment is, I just want to say that thank God we're doing that Cleveland project. So that's a great, great thing.
I think both Cleveland and Cavor.
Yeah.
The two Cs. Laurel?
A question on the bid pricing. It reflects 15% of average bid price. Is there anything, recognizing this council is very aware, as we've talked about many times, of dollars and cents, is there any openness to having more look at it at the 15% of accepted bid price to look at it that way versus the average?
I think that was the agreement.
Is that in the agreement? Okay, the average. Okay, that is in the contract. Okay.
And I think we had discussion about that.
Okay.
And agreed that that was the fair process. We're still coming out in a better scenario.
Your Honor. Mr. Myers, thank you. Let's say we tentatively agree these five projects. The clock, do I understand, starts to click. But let's say next year, we say, okay, of those five, let's just say we're only gonna do three. If we open up the gate today and you start doing some work, and then we don't do the project, are there fees assessed for the work you've done?
We, I'm fine withholding some of those fees for a little while, not forever. So at some point, and we can stop these projects at any point in time. But, yeah, there would be some fee at some point that we would want to get reimbursed for that time put into the project.
I think it'd be appropriate for the levy to look at this a little closer. I'm not an engineer. I was kidding you about it earlier today. On the D Lagoon Road, let's just say marks come in and they put in a new road. I mean, how much engineering is there needed to be to tear up a road and put one in?
Well, not, I mean, not, not as much as, like these other types of projects. The D Lagoon project is definitely significantly less engineering. But we do have to put together a set of plans and specifications that we, so we can put this thing out to bid so contractors can give us good, fair pricing.
Yep, I understand. Thank you.
I think, well, these, these will have to be individual resolutions on Monday evening. So how is the?
We can do it today, just to put it onto the agenda as one motion.
Yeah.
Monday, we'll just do it.
Okay, so would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make yours motion.
Thank you, Scott, and second by Al. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign? The motion is approved. Do we want them on the consent agenda?
No.
Yep, right, consent agenda it is. The next.
I think there is a no. I think there is no.
Yeah, I prefer to have them discussed under resolutions.
Well, that was the purpose of today. So there's no point in bringing things to the communal hall if we're gonna sit and talk about it again on Monday, so. But I think the majority was in favor, anyway, so. The next item is the Aquatic Center 2025 recap, and call upon Len Taylor and his team.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excited to share with you some about the Aquatic Center's first season. So we've got a little timeline. Lynn will go through this presentation with me. So prior to the first date on the timeline, we started recruiting staff in January of last, of this year. And we were able to fill all positions in preparation for that opening. So then, May 27th, the pools were filled with water. May 29th, we had the community open houses. And then June 2nd was an extremely hot day, but it was full of excitement. We allowed for free admission to the pool, and we had food trucks and giveaways and stuff. It was a lot of fun. Couple of the committee members took a plunge, first people in the pool. But so, yeah, it was a good indication of what the summer would be like. Not realizing that it was gonna be a really wet summer, but anyway. Then we went through the season. August 22nd was our last day of swimming. We were hoping to be open through the 24th, but the last two days were rainouts. Just some fun facts about the pool. 167,000 gallons between both pools. That's basically a third of what our water towers hold. There's 7,000 linear feet of piping, equivalent to 23 football fields just for the pools. And then within the building, there's another 4,600 linear feet, so another 15 football fields of length. And then 350 cubic yards of concrete. It was quite a process getting it built. It took just a little over a year to complete. But working with Tradesman Construction, their foreman, John, and all their subs, it really went well. Okay. Our attendance shows here on the graphs. For June, 5,908 total visits. July, 8,377, and then August, 4,780. As I mentioned before, it did turn out to be a little bit of a rainy summer. So June, we were open 24 days, closed seven days due to weather. Opened 29 days in July, closed to weather two days, and then opened 15 days in August with three weather closures. And we had a few days within those that were partial closures as well. Storms rolling through, we'd have to close. So this is an exciting little snapshot. We had 173 towns represented, people coming to use the facility. So we, we had a pretty broad reach within Minnesota. And this one's pretty astounding. 30 states were represented. We, we tracked people coming to the pool by their zip code, and so we were able to determine 30 different states people came from to visit your aquatic center. We provided or had available day passes and memberships. So total attendance, we had 19,065 visits. 9,317 day passes, 8,762 memberships. And then we offered a 10 punch pass that we would sell for a reduced rate. It was $70 for the 10 punch pass.
And just to be clear, we didn't sell $8,000 in memberships. That was 8,000 visits for using their membership. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, right. Okay, our expenses, you can see the, in the pie chart, wages and benefits, as in most of our operations is the biggest piece. Insurance, utilities, supplies. So year one expenses, total of $157,058. With that, that's a snapshot up to year-to-date. We will have some ongoing expenses through the year with some electric and some gas expenses. There's one, one room in the building with the equipment that will be heated throughout the winter. Our revenue for the year, $184,224. Concessions, $50,223. And then total revenue, $234,57. The concessions revenue will be reduced some by some costs that we had in there for supplies. So there's a nice number to see. Our profit for year number one, $77,398. So we were projecting, through the studies prior to opening, that we would be subsidizing the pool basically at $125,642. So with a $77,000 swing to the good with that profit, we were $202,000 to the good. Just a nice swing to see, rather than having to subsidize a pool, it actually made some money. Of that revenue, $72,662 in memberships. The daily sales were $111,562, for a total of $184,224. We are, the rates you did set with the fee schedule being passed a few weeks ago, so those will remain same for next year. And we'll review those annually. As you can see on the table and on the screen, the Daily Journal Best of Ottertail County, we, we won in two categories. Best place for family entertainment and best place for summer fun. So it, it was a huge hit. If you had the opportunity to go up there on a nice, warm day, you'd have seen the excitement and all the fun that was being had up there. So thanks to the committee, Bridgette and group, for pushing this through. Council for approving it and obtaining the legislation, along with staff for the sales tax. Like I said, the building process with Tradesman Construction and their subs was a really seamless process. Went really well. And all our staff. Foremost, Pam. She did a lot of work. She put in many hours, scheduling, training, and doing the background stocking and supplying of the concession stand. But, yeah, the facility wouldn't have run without Pam, so thank you, Pam. Looking forward to next year. We're gonna try some different things with a year under our belt and getting a feel for the operation. We'll try to do some more programming-type things next year. So potentially some swimming lessons, some early-morning lap swim opportunities. Toddler time, where it would be open just to young children so that the big kids aren't there beating on them. And then maybe offering some private events. Looking at maybe adjusting the pool hours to accommodate working parents so that they could maybe go there and be with their families later into the evening. So we are winterized. It's all tucked up, ready to go for the winter. All the lines have been blown out. And we will be stacking all the furniture someplace. There's not much storage place out there, but we will get it under some cover. But, yeah, we'll look to try to open around the 1st of June like we did this year. School's got a later outdate next spring, so we'll keep that in mind and determine a opening date as it comes closer. So thanks to Ella Meyer, Mayor, for putting this presentation together, the basics of it. And then Lynn filled in with the finishing touches after Ella went back to Ole Miss, so. Any questions?
Any questions, Tim?
Thanks, Your Honor. Mr. Taylor, thank you very much. It's obvious that the pool was a great success for the community, and I think, I think the people that really pushed for this over the last few years should be very happy and proud of what they did for this, this city. I think it also can kind of shut down some of the naysayers at this time. However, we know things will go year by year. Things will change as they go. It may get more revenue, it may get less. Do we know what we're gonna do with that money, that extra money right now? Is it gonna go into the general fund, Andrew, or are you gonna set it aside for a special pool fund?
Yeah. Oh.
So we were just talking about this as we were going through the presentation. And what I would like to do is, since we were planning on subsidizing that, I want to save that in the capital outlay as a jumpstart for capital maintenance on that. So we'll get through to the end of the year, we'll reconcile for the audit, and then that'll be in one of our fund balances. That's what I propose to do is restrict that, have the council restrict that for the pool. And I'd come back to you and get a resolution on that at the end of the year, or maybe, I'd probably have to do it before the end of the year, I'm thinking from my accounting standards. Sorry to tangent in the accounting way here, but, yes. Would want to segregate that for the pool.
Good. I figured that. I figured that was coming. I figured that was coming. With that being said, that it was successful, did we do any subsidizing of passes, you know, any low-income passes? Did we help out any kids in the community this year, where we were just kind of getting our feet on the ground? That may be something that this community wants to look at for next year, if we're able to do that. It's just a thought and...
Yeah, it has been discussed at the park board. And the only help subsidy kind of thing that was offered this year was the library actually purchased a pass, and then people could check that out for free at the library.
We did have pretty good people that called in also, like they wanted to buy for another family. So we just directed them to how to do that on the website, and they bought it on behalf of somebody else. We have a handful of those.
Perfect. I think a couple other things. I would encourage this council, now that we know what we have for numbers, I mean, you're seeing a substantial amount of people go through this facility, that this council kind of entertain looking in the future, maybe had some naming rights for this. I don't think there's anything wrong with a local corporation getting involved to try to even generate more revenue for this, for us to give back to the community, give back to other citizens that can't go in here. So I would encourage the council to think of that. I don't want to be a downer, but what were the complaints this year that we can change for next year? Is there anything that came up that was an issue? Was it the closing of a certain temperature? Was it the pool was too full? Was there anything that we need to adjust for next year? And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we did have some criticism. We had a closing point of 65 degrees, and we had a little bit of pushback on that. Other than that, I don't really know of any complaints.
The issue would be not having recycling bins.
Which we got, though, I thought.
Covered that.
Those have been ordered. And then, maybe I'm one of the biggest complainers, but closing at 7:00 PM is too early for people that work full-time, have to get home, have supper, and try to get back to the pool, you have about 20 minutes to be there. So that's where we've heard a lot of comments about keeping it open.
A lot of comments from one person.
From me.
Pam, did you hear anything else?
Really, I mean, parking was an issue, like housing was strange.
Yeah. So we know we built the parking lot too small, but the school had said that their parking lot would be available for use in the summer months. So we do have plenty of on-street parking, and the streets were lined. So we had to, now at the end of the season, we painted some curbs and put up some signage and tried to manage that parking a little better.
Is there a benefit of putting a sign at the Aquatic Center saying, you know, parking available in the school?
That's a good idea.
You do actually kind of physically direct people across the road?
Yeah, very good idea. Because I don't think it was utilized that much.
Couple things. I don't think it was just Andrew, that the evening, I heard that from constituents. I think getting up to that 8:00, 8:30, especially when we have daylight, would be nice. One other thought is, I've had the question of, are the punch cards that are unused this year, if people have punches left, are they still gonna be honored next year? If they have, they'll still be good, they can carry them over?
Yes. Yep. They were bought and paid for, same price next year, so.
Scott?
Budget, on the budget, being this news came up now just lately, did you have anything in the budget last year, or for this coming year for a subsidy, or did you not?
We do something, and then, of course, the Tax Levy Committee will work between now and December. We're kicking that off again today. So we'll look at that. You know, we'll still, I'm guessing, be somewhat conservative. I mean, we're not gonna put in exactly these numbers for next year. We'll look at it. Like Guy said, we still will have more expenses coming this year.
Right.
But yes, I know we dropped it way down, maybe, did I have like a $40,000 subsidy in the budget that was presented to you?
His last year was 150?
125.
It was 125, you're right.
I think, I think it was around 40, but...
Thank you.
Not trusting my memory perfectly on that.
And I think one of the things would be is that this should be a good year, but it's so unpredictable. You know, if it's a cold and wet summer, then obviously, you know, revenues will be down. So I think, as Bill said, we want to be kind of understanding that, you know, it was the first year, and, you know, until we get two or three years under our belt to see a trend.
I'd like to see our group, or whoever is in charge of this, look at doing some subsidies for nonprofits. The library passes were very hard to check out. I know that there was a big demand for that pass, to do more to the library, possibly looking at the food shelf Salvation Army, someplace safe, maybe the pediatricians in town to have access to some passes that they can give out or check out, or even day passes. I just, to me, if we're making money on this, there are kids that are have-not kids in this community that we need to get into this facility.
Can we do that in the liquor store, too?
Sure. Peggy Underwood and somebody else, I can't remember who it was, they have come to the park board, and we've discussed that. And also, Mike, Mr. Mortenson, to your point, we did talk about some naming rights and some possible sponsorship of some banners on the fencing. So we will look at some of that for other revenue sources.
One last question, Mr. Taylor. Did we ever reach capacity on the pool and turn anybody away this year?
There was one day where there was a count done, and I went up there and saw that it really wasn't an accurate count. It was counting everybody within the facility, not people in the pools. And that's the number that counts. So, no.
Right. Thank you, Lynn. And as you say, congratulations to all. The next item on the agenda is the City Hall Bell Tower update, and again, that's you.
So I was excited about that last item, not so much this one. So on September 17th was Constitution Day. The Daughters of the American Revolution asked that the bell ring at 4:00 PM four times. And we've had some electrical issues with the bell. So I went up there actually with a hammer, just to hit the bell four times for the Daughters of the American Revolution, and saw for myself the bell was not sitting level. So having seen that, I got ahold of Alex Schwartzhoff from Interstate Engineering and Josh Scholl from Straight Line Roofing and Siding to come and look at what would need to be done to rectify that bell not sitting level. So they were gonna be coming Friday at 10:00, Friday the 19th. So before they were to come, I went up into the tower and was pulling off some beadboard that was the wall and the ceiling covering, just to expose the framing, so they could look and see what was going on. Pulled down a few boards, took all the boards off the ceiling, took some boards off of the walls. And the last board I took off, the bell shifted, it settled, I'm guessing, two or three inches. So I, along with a couple staff, Tim Hamis and Tom Lockowitzer, we scurried down. I immediately went to Andrew's office and suggested that we evacuate the building. That was done. Building was evacuated within, I don't know, 10 minutes. Everybody gathered here in the city council chambers. We talked about the situation. People were allowed to go gather their things, and then the building was evacuated. That afternoon, after many phone calls out on the street, talking with Andrew, Bill, Alex, Chief Mokau, we got to the point where we realized we weren't gonna be able to get a crane that day to remove the bell. So Alex and Chief Mokau, they came up with the idea of putting cribbing under the bell from the roof of the cupola up to the bell, so that if, over the weekend, the bell were to settle or fall, it would only go two or three inches. So fire department staff, they used the ladder truck and were able to get eight-by-eight timbers from that roof all the way up to the under, right up to the underside of the bell. And that gave us some feeling of safety, that it wasn't gonna go down into the lobby at least. So sat that way for the weekend. Monday morning, we were fortunate enough to have Corby Contracting, Gary Corby and his crew, and then Josh Scholl from Straight Line Roofing and Siding. They had equipment and cranes here. They put together a plan, along with Alex and talking with Bill and Andrew and the whole group that was here, to come up with a plan to try to lift the dome and the bell off. First, thought we'd lift the dome off first and then pull the bell out, but they all had to come out as one piece. And it was lifted and lowered successfully, put on a trailer, and it's sitting in a building right now, in storage, safekeeping. And we're working on a plan now to reinstall it, rebuild the cupola. And we've got a couple leads on some contractors that specialize in this kind of work. And we'll be working along with the State Historic Preservation Office, because we're a national registered building, and get it built back to their satisfaction and get it reinstalled. Hopefully to get that done within the next few months.
You need to let me saw things off?
Yeah. So after the bell was removed, it was determined that the whole cupola structure was actually pretty far gone. It was deteriorated, the framing was rotted. And so it was just decided to cut it off at each support point and remove it. And now, as it sits, the, each point where that cupola was attached has been covered with some poly and hose clamped down, so the building is watertight.
Any questions, Evelyn?
Your Honor, I appreciate it. I think, I think, Mr. Taylor, I think what we gotta say to you is, once you recognize the situation, I think everything that was done from that moment on is great. I think it's great. I mean, it could have been, could have been absolute disaster with the things that were done there. So I commend you and Andrew and the staff and different things for doing what you had to do at that moment. Hindsight's 20/20 on everything. This is a, this is a big bell. I'm sure it's very, very heavy. I'm sure it's been up there a long time, my whole life or longer. What is the process for like OSHA, different contractors that look at this? What's the inspection record on this, of looking at this from before that day on?
Yeah, I don't know how frequently it's been looked at. We did have the bell tower painted a couple years ago. And it was noted then that that roof, the beadboard roof of the bell area, was, a little bit of it was falling, and so it looked like there was maybe some concern there. So I hadn't seen it, though, for myself until Constitution Day. But so, frequency of inspection, I guess, very infrequent. But you're right, it's been up there since longer than you were born, 97 years. We did the inscription, or the casting of the bell. It tells the company name, Monili, I think, Bell, out of Troy, New York. And they made bells that were between 1,600 pounds and 3,000 pounds. So we don't know what ours weighs, we haven't weighed it yet. We're gonna take it to a scale at some point, but it's heavy. We don't know if it would have stopped at the lobby floor or basement floor.
No state inspection records needed, no OSHA inspection that is in compliance that we had to do?
No.
Any other questions?
I know the big question is, I had a couple questions, how much is that gonna cost us? And of course, I said, I have no idea. But Bill, me and I talked about that there is a building fund that we have for this. And of course, we've talked about that this has to be put back up because of the historic factor of it is a registered building. So I suppose when it comes down to it, we'll see some numbers when it comes to it. And is there any way of building that completely out of metal, then, nowadays, because it's, that's a better way of doing it, I'm sure?
Yeah, like I said, that's my thought, too, build it out of better materials, you know, that we're aware of these days. But we will have to work with the State Historic Preservation Office and go by their requirements.
I mean, I don't see it getting put back up until next year, personally.
My thought, too.
So I mean, I, I mean, the only thing I would ask is make sure that we have secured, you know, I mean, whether, there's lots of materials available now for sealing things. So, you know, just having an exposed kind of piece on the top of the roof, so...
Yep, that definitely has been addressed.
Yep.
Your Honor, one last thing. I would imagine, Mr. Bremseth, maybe the Historic Preservation Committee and Mrs. Beck will look at some type of grant funding, if this is a true historic thing that has to go back up. Is that correct, Mr. Bremseth, maybe?
Yeah, two things. One, we have submitted an insurance claim. We don't know if that will be approved, so, you know, that is certainly one avenue that we want to explore first and foremost, which will fund this. But secondary to that, yes, we've already talked to, you've been exchanging messages with SHIPPLE, and they've talked about potential grant opportunities. Certainly wouldn't cover the entirety of the project, but I think, you know, they've seen gifts in the amount of $15,000 to $20,000. It'll be a chunk of the project, but we anticipate the project will be more costly than that. So we'll look at other options as well, but trying to explore kind of in sequential order some of these things to address this.
One question I got is, the gold dome is intact and reusable, is that correct?
It's intact. There was some damage to it, but it's copper, so it's pretty malleable and I think can be repaired.
Okay.
Lynn?
Your Honor.
I think Mark was first.
Go ahead, Mark.
No, go ahead.
Just a question that I have, too. You know, that bell tower's open. Is there another roof system underneath there? It's because there's rain and there's snow that builds up in there. What does that look like? You know, what's underneath there?
Yeah, it's a rubber EPDM roof that was installed, I don't know, 10 or 15 years ago. So that's in place. The only parts that were open was each support of the cupola. They were hollow, actually, those supports. So that's what was capped. And the rest of the roof there is sealed. And then there's another roof below that, and that's all sealed as well, up where the railing is. So it's all, what we feel right now is watertight.
Pretty good?
Yeah.
Say, Guy?
Yes.
Maybe you should talk about, was it 15, 20 years ago, when we rebuilt the main structure under there? We reframed that, I remember.
Yeah, actually, longer ago than that. I talked to Cliff Allen, the former Public Works Director, Monday morning, and he said it was during the time he was Public Works Director, and he's been gone for 17 years. So, but there were laminated beams that were installed under the main structure of the tower to support the framing that was at that point determined to be sagging.
So those supports that came down on that roof that's underneath there, so basically, if you, if I'm reading this right, if, let's say if you had a flat surface like a deck, and you were gonna have like a post, it just sat on there? Is that how it was? Or did it go down through that roof, or?
It just sat on there and is attached to the roof.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's where the issue became, is that correct?
Right.
Because those were hollow also?
Right, yep.
Muck?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Taylor, very good job. Thank you very much. I sent Andrew and Chief Mokau a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago, about some public building grants that are available. I would ask that those grants be applied for, for this, and I think also for the fire department. So wherever we can get some funding, that'd be wonderful. Again, it's a historical building, we should have some, a little bit of more kudos there, if you will. But again, I appreciate your staff, I appreciate you calling to order right away and handling this appropriately. Very, very good job.
Well, thankfully, it ended the way it did. It could have ended way worse. I didn't mention new chief here. He also was on-site and a lot of his staff in helping to secure the roads right away. But yeah, to all the people involved, Andrew, Bill, Chief Mokau, and Corby Construction, and Josh Scholl from Straight Line, they were just, they were right here and stuck through it, through the whole process, and were really great to work with.
Right. Thank you, Lynn, for me to move on. So the next item on the agenda was town hall meetings. This obviously got brought up, we've, previously, we've done, I think, four town hall meetings so far. Councilmember Leighton had asked about frequency and timing. So this morning, it was about discussion about going forward. Obviously, there are no dates set for any future town hall meetings. You know, for me personally, I don't mind quarterly. Monthly is too frequently for me. But, you know, I'm here to kind of like facilitate a discussion on what does the council wish to do? Do we want to stick with monthly, or do we want to go to quarterly? So... So with that, I will open it up for, for discussion. Mark, you were the one about timing, so maybe you can kick it off.
Your Honor, thank you. Yes. I've had conversations with the people who attend and some of the other guys that have been with our independent town hall meetings, and five o'clock is just too early. We've got people that are just getting off work, et cetera. Historically, I think we had a, the independent town hall meetings at the library at, at 6:30 and ran till eight. Five o'clock is just too early in the day. The second conversations are, if it were to be later, I think we would have a better opportunity to have more attendance. We maintain it on the calendar. We've not had an agenda in the past, but maybe that's something that we could add to it. So I think the biggest hurdle right now is the five o'clock hour doesn't work. 6:30 to eight would be fine. I understand there's some staff concerns about opening and closing, but we can address that as well. Thank you.
Anybody else got comments? Al?
You know, I think the, the five o'clock time is, is probably an issue. You know, I think it was either six or 6:30, I know that we were doing them prior to this. And that could kind of fluctuate too, because I can't remember what the cutoff was that we had to be out of the library. It was eight, yeah. And a lot of times, you know, people would stay after and visit or continue their discussions, what they wanted to talk about with different individuals. And, you know, that was nice to see, but, you know, that can be done outside after the facility closes. As far as their frequency, you know, used to be every month. You know, I guess that's up to the people who are, you know, the council, what, what you guys are thinking. I think quarterly is probably too little. If it's going to be changed from a, every month, I think it should go every other month then, at least have it, you know, six times a, a year at least, which, that's what I would suggest instead of going quarterly, if somebody wants to cut those. Also too, you know, we have to keep in mind, this is not for, for us. It's for the people who want to voice an opinion and have their concerns heard. And those that come before an open forum here, before a council meeting, that would be a great venue for somebody to discuss, because it can be discussed more in depth. And if somebody has accusations or wants to bring something forward, that would be a great place for them to do it, instead of doing it here in an open forum, which is fine too, but I think it can be discussed more in detail there, because there's timelines on those open forums. And then it can be really dug into, and then could probably be brought into a council meeting after that at some point in time. So I want people to have that opportunity, and also give the council people an opportunity to respond, because we cannot respond during an open forum to somebody who is speaking at a podium. That's the rule. And I think the council people need to have voice in this too, and that's where these town hall meetings can really get good for both parties. And it's not be this adversary thing, it can be a collaborative thing to make things much better. Thank you.
Scott?
I'm the only one that's attended all four of the council town hall meetings that have happened in this last four months. There's only been one other council member to attend, and the mayor's been at one of them. The attendance at the first one was less than 30. The one that was this week had three people. As much talk as there's been about how there's potential for, you know, involvement from the community and a lot of interest and talk about how there'll be discussion and, you know, frankly, I just haven't seen it. I think the general idea is probably a good one, giving folks a chance to come and discuss things. But these meetings have no agenda, they have no staff presence, there's no, there's no minutes taken, the staff, I'm sorry, the, there's no news reporting, you know, the radio doesn't cover it, the newspaper doesn't cover it. So even though there may be people there that express some great ideas and great opinions, it's a dead end, frankly, for the people that want to see something happen, for the suggestions or comments that they might make. And frankly, for myself, to be there and try to answer questions on behalf of the council, it puts, in my view, an unfair responsibility on me to try and speak for the council or speak for the staff. And, you know, I've tried to do the best I could to answer questions that I could, and to, you know, present things as I understand them to be, and be fair and accurate about it. But it's, it's kind of an awkward situation, I think you can understand that. So just as far as how they work, there should be some structural change to how the meeting actually happens, if it's going to really accomplish anything, in my view. But to answer Mayor's question, as far as the timing and the frequency and all of that, I would agree that monthly is too often. I think that quarterly would be plenty. And as far as the concerns of where to have it, the library actually worked pretty well when there were, you know, as there have been different meetings there, because it's already open until eight o'clock, there isn't any kind of additional work to the staff to have to, you know, come and get the meeting open or get the place closed up or, or whatever. And to the degree that there may be scheduling conflicts even to be able to get that room there, I don't know, maybe that can get worked out on, on some schedule. But the timeframe, that, you know, 6:30 to eight, I think is probably a better suggestion as far as the time. I think the location of the library is convenient, it's a city property, we don't have to rent a space, and it doesn't put an additional burden on the staff here. So that would be my suggestion to do it there, but beyond the timing and the frequency, you know, if there's going to be any real practical good come from it that you can measure, I think it needs to be handled differently. And I made some suggestions to that effect, and I guess we'll see where the rest of the folks want to go with it.
Thank you, Scott.
I would agree with both what Al said and Scott said to some extent. The one I was at, I felt like there were questions asked that were not involved in the day-to-day of the city operations, that falls to staff on a lot of the things, and it, it felt hard to answer some things that people expected us to have answers for. And so I would agree that it's a, it's a hard structure to feel like you can answer, especially when there's only a handful of us council members at the one that I was at, for example. I think that the later time is important. I think that we would have better attendance. I'm not opposed to the library, as long as we can use some audio equipment so everyone in the room can hear, and which I think is available to us there. I'm not opposed to either quarterly or every other month. I think monthly seems like a lot when we've had low attendance.
I was just thinking, as far as the library venue, sometimes those days are not all available in those times. I still feel it should be here in, in the council chambers, this is the people's house, and they should be able to use it. It's, as far as staff goes, you know, a council member can close this up, I would think, you know, where the key's at, that sort of thing. I think the timing would be helpful if it was a little later. As far as us answering questions, I remember when we finally got this going, that, of course, I can't answer the questions either. But what you can do, those questions are asked, and then you bring it to the council, you bring it to the City Hall. No different than I got a call the other day about somebody's feeding turkeys, wild turkeys in town. Okay, what do we do about that? You know, I had to, I called Andrew. But it's no different than if somebody gives you a phone call, or if they bring it up and you can't answer it right then. This is very simple. You just dig into it the next day.
And I, and I, I don't think, like, if we have an agenda, I think that's, then it's more, then it's us dictating, and I would say that we don't want an agenda, because, you know, the whole purpose is not, not for us to dictate the conversation.
And that's the fun of it too, is that you don't know what's coming at you.
Yep.
And I, I find that refreshing when it's wide open, and you don't have an agenda, because then people don't feel that they have to, can only talk about certain issues. And I know we've got a person in the audience here this morning that has been to a lot of town hall meetings, and a lot of open forums, and has spoke at many, and has also sat and listened at a lot of people's different views. And that's what it's about. Thank you.
All right.
So I think for me, I would agree of looking at doing town hall meetings maybe every other month, and then changing that timeframe to that six or 6:30. But I would, I would agree, I think that we need to keep them here in council chambers moving forward. I think that's important. And as far as an agenda, I mean, like Al said, it's, it's for the people, it's not for us to decide, and then who would set that agenda, you know? You'd be responsible to set that agenda for that town hall meeting.
The, the whole purpose is an open discussion.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
The other comment is, how can we blame the new police chief on this? You know, how can we drag him into it?
So.
I had a speeding ticket the other day, yeah.
Excuse me, Your Honor.
Sure.
At the podium?
Yep.
Thanks.
Bob Noah, Fergus Falls. I stood here a few months back and requested these town hall meetings. There's some changes being proposed after only four meetings. I was one of the four people that showed up at the meeting on, on Monday. I wasn't discouraged, because we were able to focus on, or I was, being able to ask Councilman Kwame a lot of questions, having to do with town halls. And so, in my view, it, it's not a council-driven event, it's for the people, as Al had said, about discussing important things that we can delve into in a way that's not just restricted to coming up to the podium during regular council meetings. So all these changes that are being proposed, like, you know, quarterly or every other month, this is more restrictions on our, our liberty and our opportunities to come to the table and to discuss in a public forum in our house what's important to us, and what's important to our culture. So I'd like to keep it at once a month. Changing the, the timing of it to 6:30, 6, 6:30 is going to make, make a huge impact as to the, the attendance. And so I would like to see that change, and this is about listening to the people. So when you make your decisions as a council, remember that, please. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Right, okay, well, we'll come up with some dates and we'll have some discussion.
Your Honor, just one final comment, thank you. In, historically, the independent town hall meetings were on a Wednesday. Now, number one, there is no good day of the week. Everybody's got an agenda, everybody's got, you know, church or football, basketball, whatever, but those Wednesday meetings seem to be in more attendance and possibly help some of our other commissioners join, or council people join. So Monday might be just a goofy day, too. I, I agree, monthly, number two, 6:30 at the council chambers, and possibly Wednesdays would be a better day, Your Honor.
And maybe another option would be this, and I agree with you, Mark. You know, if we just right now switched it to either six to 6:30, see what the attendance is. If, if that's not coming up, then maybe look at every other month. But let's not, you know, dive into something right away here, but let's kind of take it a step at a time, let's see what needs to be done. And if it goes from six to 6:30, and we've got more people showing up and more interest, and maybe a different day, because if Mondays are a difficult day, because here you've had a weekend, I know in my business, Mondays are awful, because a lot of stuff happens over a weekend. So it's very difficult on a Monday night to do it for some types of occupations and that nature. So, you know, I'd like to see maybe a day change in, in the time for sure. As far as frequency, monthly, I'd like to see that stay right at the moment, and then we can reevaluate that maybe in six months. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Right, the next item on the agenda is cannabis registration process update. Obviously Clara Beck is going to kind of have some discussion on this, but just, you know, a, a few opening kind of comments was that, obviously, you know, we've asked for people to make application, and the files are exceptionally large, so they are on, you know, the city's website, and, and there was a link both in the packet and on the website. I think, you know, the goal of this morning is to just go through on the basic level of what each applicant is, and where they sit physically. And I would encourage council that, you know, today, between now and Monday evening, that if you have not kind of gone through these applications, and some of them are 140 pages, there's a couple that's 140 pages, this, you know, there's a couple that are 50 pages, and there's one that's kind of like, you know, 20 pages. But, you know, ask, get those questions that you have out, because on Monday evening, you know, we need to put this thing to bed, and we need to make decisions on Monday night. And so coming on Monday night and asking questions of clarification is too late. And it's putting people under undue pressure. So, you know, look, look at, you know, the packets, and get your questions, you know, either out this morning, or, you know, email them to Clara, so that she's, can get those answers back to the whole council, so that Monday evening we're in a place to make a decision. And, you know, there's some discussion about what is fair. I don't know whether there's any fair system in this, but, you know, they're presented to us today in an alphabetical order, and I would say that that's probably as quote "fair" as, as we can do, in terms of that. You're meant to be looking at each application and its merits of good, bad, or indifferent, and make a decision based upon that. So with that, I will turn it over to Clara.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks. Yes, just to give you kind of a background of how we got to the point where we are this morning, the application window was opened on August 19th. We've been in, the, the city had been in contact with several applicants who had either submitted already through the first come, first served process, or had been continuing to ask questions about our application process. So the word got out to the entities that were known to the city via email, and then there was also a notice put on our, our city website right on the homepage, so if you were looking for information about how to apply for a registration, it was right there. And then it would take the, the interested party directly to the application materials. So prior applications that had been received under first come, first served, they were allowed to either resubmit their full application or submit follow-up information, just to fit all of the selection process criteria, which is what we use to collect the information. So all of the applicants were given the selection policy that was passed by the council in December of 2024, and they had the original application materials as well, so they could supplement. Any new applicants were asked to follow the new process, so provide all of the information in the selection policy. The initial review then of all of the applicants is this morning before you, and then the conversations that have happened with the applicants is that decisions would be made October 6th. Lynn, if you want to go ahead. Again, as I mentioned, these are the submission requirements that were based on our selection policy. These were included in the application materials for all of the applicants to look at. It is a substantial list. Some of it does match what was received during the first come, first served process, but a lot of it was new, including business plans and narratives. So this is just the full list. We do have on our list proof of OCM lower potency hemp edible retailer license, if applicable. I do have a note there just saying that that would not be applicable to any of our current applicants. The state is not taking over that process until, actually, today, October 1st, so they have an open window for lower potency hemp edible retailer licensing to occur at the state level. Up until this point, the city has been maintaining that application process. So we received six applications. This is the list of them in alphabetical order, and I just have basic information about all of them, including their zoning and their buffer zones, that I'd just like to go over with you this morning, and then, as the mayor said. And then, as the mayor said, if you've got questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those, or if I don't have the answer, to seek those. We do have a couple of the applicants here in the audience, but not all of them. Okay, first up on the list is Greenwood Roots LTD. This is also locally known as Elevate Dispensary. They are working together on this application. Elevate will be sharing a license with them and they're working on the transfer of that license. The location is 214 West Lincoln Avenue, which is in our downtown district, which is a B3 zone. This address, 214, already does have an active IUP, so they are compliant with the zoning requirements. Can you go to the next one? Thanks. With our interim use permits, we, when we changed our ordinance to up the buffer zones, the language kind of grandfathers in our existing IUPs. So in this case, we have a 500-foot buffer for any public or private schools. So this is the buffer there. I did go through the list of property owners in that area and there are no schools, private or public, that fall within that 500-foot buffer. And we had a 250-foot buffer for any daycare, residential treatment facility, attraction within a public park regularly used by minors, including a playground or athletic field or another cannabis business. So again, here is that buffer zone. And I did go through the list of property owners and did not see any that flagged as, as not fitting within this buffer zone. All right, moving on, NB2A Investments. This one's a little bit different in that they don't already own this property, but they have submitted to the council a letter of intent for the purchase of city-owned property. This is, right now, the parcel is the West Liquor Store. The idea would be to parcel off the, the, the chunk that's kind of unused to the north of that, of the liquor store. So that address is 210 Lincoln Avenue West. It is a, a B2 zone, so currently it is non-compliant with our ordinance. So aside from purchasing the property, the new property owners, while splitting the parcel and purchasing, they would need to go through a rezoning process. They are adjacent to B6 uses, so it would be fairly simple to, to do that rezoning to a B6. However, they would have to go through that in order for me to be able to say they are compliant, as they are. I did run the buffer zones on there. This would fall under the, the new buffer zones that were passed by the council not too long ago, so 1,000-foot buffer from a public or private school. I did not see any properties on that list that would preclude from the use of this property. And just to clarify as well, when, when they do, if and when they do split that parcel, that would change this buffer zone. So right now I have the buffer from the entire parcel, but just keep in mind the parcel would get smaller and move slightly up on the map. Okay, thanks, Lynn. 500-foot buffer, not, sorry, located within 500 feet of a daycare, residential treatment facility, et cetera. At this point in time, we also, sorry, we also do say and from within another cannabis business. Since, again, this parcel has not been split, you may notice that the very bottom of that buffer is going to hit another applicant that we have. When this, when the parcel changes size, that buffer will change. But as of right now, should two registrations go forward on this side of town, there is potential that those buffer zones could overlap. So just keep that in mind. But the goal, again, would be that that parcel would be split. Okay, Red Iris Cannabis LLC, this is another one here on the west side of town. Oh, sorry, the spacing got really weird on this one, but they are in discussions with the Westridge Mall owner about purchasing the property that's directly in front of Westridge Mall there on 913 West Lincoln Avenue. It is B6 compliant. And just as a note, they did apply as, I believe this one was a Mezzo license, so there was a $500 fee that was associated with their application. To this point, all of our others have been micro businesses which have not required payment of a fee. They did pay their fee. The receipt is with their application materials. Again, running the buffer here on the west side of town, they were not in danger of being within 1,000 feet of any school, public or private. And then, Lynn, if you can do the 500. Here's our 500-foot buffer. And as we just discussed with the other property that contains the West Liquor Store, there could be some overlap until that parcel is split. Next up is, we're moving back downtown. We've got Sugar High Cannabis Consulting and Dispensary at 123 East Lincoln Avenue. This was another micro business, so they were not required to pay any fee. This is a B3 zone and it does have an active IUP on file. Here's our 500-foot buffer from any schools. And again, this is one that would have been grandfathered in under our old buffer standards, so not within 500 feet of any public or private school. And next, has not been determined to be within 250 feet of any daycare, residential treatment facility, public park with an attraction for minors or any other cannabis business. They are over 800 feet apart from each other in that downtown zone, just to clarify. Our final two do not have locations identified at this time. They submitted without having any, any locations in place. So Southwest Mezzo, again, this was one that was required to pay a fee. They did pay that. Their, their receipt is in their application materials. They, they supplied as much information as they had without having a location. So I cannot say whether or not they are compliant with zoning because there is no location. Similar, Ola Enterprises LLC, Mezzo business, they did pay their fee. Again, no location, so I cannot provide you with any zoning information or any buffer zones, but they provided as much information as they were able to based on their state applications. And now I am happy to take any questions.
Any initial questions of Clara?
Question I have goes back a ways. What's the definition of a school?
Oh, sure. There is a definition of a school. I don't have it in front of me, but it is a, a public or private school. It does not include things like dance academies or anything. It would be like K3 education or above. But yes, there is a definition that we have been using.
Was that put forth by Fergus Falls or is that a commonly used?
It would be a commonly used state definition, yes. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions of Clara? Laura?
Yeah, just going back to the Red Iris Cannabis, can you clarify, was, did you say that they were looking at purchasing that building or were they leasing that building?
No, they would be purchasing the building. They've, my, my understanding with limited discussions with this applicant is that they are fairly far along in a process to purchase. They've been working on paperwork with the current owner. What is not clear to me is whether or not they are going to purchase contingent upon any kind of registration or if they are purchasing regardless. I am not sure.
Laurel?
Can we make, if, if they were to get a license, can it be contingent on not having a, going backwards to a lease situation if we did not want the current owner of the mall involved if that one were to get a license?
I don't see why we couldn't, but I think that would be a really great question for Rolf.
Mike, do you have a question?
I, I've got a few things, Your Honor, and I appreciate it. Councilmember Joe got me just thinking about that as a blighted building for Red Iris. Do we even know if that, we wouldn't, but can that thing even come up to code to where we're at? I mean, these individuals are putting a lot of effort into their buildings, that thing's going to take some time. That building's in tough shape. But it would be a blighted building in our community that is restored. Do you have any, any reference to that?
I do not know if they've seen the building in person, so I don't know if they've started to have any of those conversations regarding code requirements, but you are correct. There are, there are state standards that need to be met and I do believe that this building would take some work to get to that point. My understanding is that our building official likely has not been out there to review this, so we really don't know what, what it looks like. I think probably the last time he was in there was maybe a year or two ago.
Okay, good. Yeah, I have another question, so a little bit more off-topic and I can leave it to the end, but I'll leave it for you to think about. I noticed, and I apologize, I may not know their name exactly, but I go by the individual Bido, first come, first served, was in the, in the hopper. I don't see her in the list of things here today.
No, she did not choose to resubmit.
Okay, so the question I have then for her, and I don't know if the council, the mayor or the administration can do this, is she willing to give up that IUP that she had at Washington Avenue since she's not an applicant at this time? I would like to see her give up that IUP. So if that location comes up again, it has to come back through the council.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, IUPs are tied to the property. They're not tied to any specific applicant, so that would simply be a question for the property owner about whether or not they're willing to do that. As of today, my understanding is that there is likely a new business that's going to be going in there that is not cannabis-related. It's something else entirely, but they do have a signed lease. So I, I'm, I'm not going to speak for the building owner, but I would assume that based on the fact that there's going to be a different use going forward, they would probably not object to removing that interim use. But again, it would be a question for the building owner.
Good. Any other questions?
Quick one. Do we know, Mezzo licenses can mean different things and we have three Mezzo applicants here. Do we know when you've been talking with the candidates about how they plan on interpreting the rights that come with a Mezzo license?
Not individually, and I, I don't want to overstate how much communication I've had with some of these applicants. I've had a lot more conversations with more local applicants. Some of these are coming from outside of the area and I've had a lot less one-on-one interaction with those applicants. There are, yes, there are requirements at the state level or guidelines of, of ways that Mezzo licenses can be used. One of the ways a Mezzo license can be used is to have multiple retail locations. There is also growing in manufacturing components that can go along with that. At this point in time, all of our discussions have been, been related to retail. We do have zoning requirements for where things like manufacturing can occur. And it's, it's not allowed in the B3 zone at all, even with interim use or a conditional use. It would be manufacturing is something more for like the B6 or industrial zones.
It's, two of the applicants, the last two, seem very, very similar to me. Are they somehow, I mean, is, they are two different entities legally, I understand that, but are we in essence dealing with the same group with both of those applicants?
So what I've noticed throughout this process is that there are, there are larger, there are larger companies that are submitting applications and they are representing multiple smaller entities, but they do seem to be related. So yes, with these last two applications on your list, you'll note that they have the same contact information and they did come to me from the same person, but they are two different businesses.
Any other questions? If not, we will.
I think, Your Honor, just a point of order. I think the one thing that I need to, to know for sure for Monday night is what's going to be your process of how you're going to do this and are we looking at one, are we looking at two? Just give us an overview so I'm, I'm well-prepared, if you could.
Yep. I, I think basically on Monday evening, we will go through each applicant in, in the order alphabetically. And basically, we will vote on each applicant to either issue a license or not to issue a license. And each council member will obviously have a vote. And if it ends up being 4-4 on an applicant, obviously I will break the tie. And I think we do it in a formal manner of just literally going down the list and it's yes or no, yes or no, and grant one or not grant one. And ultimately, you know, the state states what we have to issue to, two licenses. You know, once we've issued two licenses, we met our legal obligation from the state. I think also on Monday evening, we should then follow, follow after we've done this a resolution, with a resolution to say that we are no longer receiving applications so that we get out of the cannabis discussion business for some time. And then, you know, we can, obviously, if, if we wish to accept more cannabis applications down the road, then obviously by the council as a party could reverse that resolution and say we are open for applicants. And I think I, I can talk to the building owner regarding Washington Avenue and see whether or not he is willing to revoke that IUP and see if we, if I can get that done. It might be a late agenda item, but it would also be good to get that on Monday evening's agenda and close that loophole, as it were.
I appreciate that very much with the IUP, I really do. So I just want to have some clarification. You're going to go alphabetical order. Let's say there's, there's two scenarios here that come into my mind. Let's say the very first two are yes, yes. Are we closed then and we're done?
No, the ordinance allows for multiple.
Three, four, okay. So it could go that route.
Yep. So I mean, if we, if we wanted to issue six, we can issue six.
Okay, all right. The other flip of the coin then is say we go down the whole loop and we go zero, 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 no, 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 all the way.
Yep. Then we start again.
Okay, all right.
I do have just one final note. So you can, you can review the applications online. I also have all of the full application packets unredacted upstairs in the Community Development Department. Feel free to stop by and take a look at those. You can make an appointment with me if you'd like to talk through any of them. Otherwise, if you just want to pop up and look, that's totally up to you. They're, they're available, just laid out on, on a desk.
Yeah, and there is no decision to be made this morning, so this is just discussion. Al?
Just a question. Does our new police chief have any comments, concerns regarding this process or any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I would say I'm pretty early in, you know, on this, but I think it's just one of those cases of you just have to follow the process and, you know, we'll kind of deal with what we need to deal with, you know, down the road. But, I mean, I will say, you know, on record, that these first two weeks, like, this community has, you know, it struggles with substance abuse, but, you know, whether it's, whether it's cannabis, whether it's THC, whether it's alcohol, I mean, it's, so it's one of those things, you just have to really, you know, encourage responsible use, you know, if it's, if it's a legal use and know that there are treatment options out there for somebody that is, that is struggling. But, you know, we'll, we'll work through it just like, just like anything.
Thank you. With that.
Mayor.
Let's go.
Okay. Just one other thing I'd like to see on Monday. Before we begin voting on each of these individual cannabis applications, all of us, each of us on the council have not had an opportunity to formally vote to express our opinion on the state mandate that brought all this about. And I think it would be appropriate for us to have some type of a resolution, not something that's a legally binding ordinance, but a statement of our position where we can say that we approve or we support or we oppose the state mandate that began this, just so that there can be a record of the position for each council member. And I think that it would be appropriate for the, the staff or for the city attorney to put something like that together for us to say, you know, we oppose the state mandate or we approve the state mandate or we're in support of this idea, you know, so that we can essentially be on record for our position on this topic. And then we can go ahead and, you know, select which ones we're selecting and all that. But I think it would be important for everybody to have that opportunity.
I mean, I think that's, it's a nice thing, but I think that, you know, we, we have a lot of federal laws and state laws that are pushed down to us, you know, on a regular basis. And I'm, I'm not sure as a city, you know, that we, we need to do that. I don't think it's a good look for the city to be revoking or stating that I don't agree with this law. You know, I mean, you know, and we can't pick and choose. And I think if we're going to do that for this, then we should do it for every law. I don't necessarily agree with the speed limit of 70 miles an hour on the interstate, you know, but I don't think it's appropriate for the city to issue a resolution saying that it's not appropriate and each, each city kind of council member being put in a position of kind of stating yes or no. I think we're obligated to do this by the state, whether we like it or we don't. And I think we just, we, you know, we can't, we can't cherry pick the things that we want to do. If we're going to do this for, for cannabis, then, you know, we should do it for all things that become state law and, and federal law.
Your Honor, I, I agree with you. I, you know, I, when I first heard Mr. Kwame say what he said, I thought, yeah, there you go, that's a tremendous way to get on the record and stuff. But I think you're right. I don't think we need a formal resolution to do it. But I know you wouldn't, you wouldn't disallow us to at least have the time to say our opinion, you know, and have it on the minutes and on the record. If we can get a chance to maybe do that, that would be what I'd look for.
But I don't think we need a formal action on it.
Yeah, I agree.
So with that, announcements, October 6th, 5:30, City Council Meeting. October 15th, 7:00 AM, Committee of the Hall. October 20th, City Council Meeting. And October 29th, Committee of the Hall. And with that, we are adjourned.